I'll call to order a meeting of the Board of Select for the Town of North Andover from Monday, July 13. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and tonight we have the honor of Alexis, Adrian, and Etka to lead us in the pledge. And we will have a little bit more with Etka to come later, too. They'll follow you. Do the flag.
.......................................
Good job, thank you.
Good job, Glenn.
Okay. First on the agenda this evening, under Communication and Announcements, is the swearing-in of our new Deputy Fire Chief, William McCarthy, as well as our new Fire Lieutenant, Jeff Judge. Joyce?
Just prior to Joyce doing the ceremony, I want to say that Deputy McCarthy has started a week ago and he's already made great strides in taking care of some material that I've moved from one side of my desk to the other. So he's done, he's been doing an excellent job and I have no doubt in my mind that he'll continue to do so. Deputy McCarthy?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
Aye.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... I want to thank you all for the ability to do this this evening and special thanks to Joyce who's always there when I need her. As usual, goodies next door, so if you're further down on the agenda and you think you've got some time, feel free to come on over. Thank you. Yeah, that's it, man. That's it.
Everybody pay the toll, 25 cents. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Jeff.
There you go, Joyce.
Hey, Bally, how's it going?
What's going on?
Not too much.
Everybody...
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Yeah, we can, you want to do that right now?
No, we'll go back after Communication.
Blazing a new trail, Mr. Chair.
There we go.
Blazing a new trail.
Approval of minutes will come after Communication and Announcements.
Communication must go first. Why rush to the minutes?
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a special recognition this evening of Etka Patel, who is receiving the Girl Scout Gold Award. And the Gold Award represents the highest achievement in Girl Scouting that you can get. Etka, why don't you come up? Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Why don't you tell us a little bit about how you got there, what your service project was? It's similar to what the Boy Scouts do, right?
Yeah, it's very similar to an Eagle Scout Award. We focus more on an everlasting change rather than theirs is more of a physical change. I've been a Girl Scout for 13 years. My project was based on helping young adults, young adults like fifth graders with transitioning from a young age to middle school. So I figured it was very important for them to, you know, find who they are at a young age, but make sure that they choose who they are instead of having someone else pick for them. So originally I was going to focus on bullying, but there's already so much awareness of bullying going on in middle school and stuff. So I decided to focus more on like emotional bullying and bullying that you're not aware that you're doing. So I visited the fifth graders at Ms. Bayless's class in Atkinson and I visited them for a week, five days, and I did various projects with them about inclusion, you know, how to deal with someone when they're not treating you nicely, things like that. And they asked me a lot of questions about middle school and overall I think they had a really great experience doing it. I had fun. Thank you.
We have a special recognition for you that I'd like to give you on behalf of the Board. It's a certificate of accomplishment that is being presented to you, Etka, in recognition of earning your Girl Scout Award. And the Girl Scout Award recipient are part of an elite group of women who embody community leadership, leaving behind a sustainable legacy. Your hard work, leadership skills, and dedication are a credit to you and the community. Congratulations on your achievement, presented by the Board of Select, who are in here tonight.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda this evening, we are going to be introducing our new staff member, Joanna Ulette.
Eric's in the back row as well.
And Erica Forre is here and Kathy Darby. Great.
Good evening. I'm really pleased to introduce to you the new Director of the Stevens Estate, effective July 20th, Joanna Ulette. Joanna is an accomplished hospitality executive with over 15 years of experience in food and beverage and general management experience in hotels and venues. Her recent experience includes marketing and event operations at the Boston Public Library, the State Room, and Rolling Ridge Retreat Center right here in town. In addition to her operational experience, she has a bachelor's degree in hotel and catering management from Manchester Metropolitan University in Manchester, England, which when she speaks you might detect that she's not from around North Andover.
I present to you Joanna Ulette.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, she might, as Kathy mentioned, you may be able to detect a Mancunian accent. I've been in the United States for 15 years now and I've been a North Andover resident for at least three years. My son went to Kitteridge for kindergarten and he's now moving into third grade. So this is how I established myself. I love North Andover. I was so thrilled to be offered the position as the Director of the Stevens Estate. I tried to get into the Stevens Estate a few years back and I couldn't, so figured I'd go and shake it up at Rolling Ridge in the meantime, which I would like to think I did a little bit. And hopefully I'll be able to work some of the same magic or similar magic at the Stevens Estate. So thank you once again. Thanks for giving me the position and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Welcome to North Andover.
Thank you.
She's great.
Yeah.
Next, we have Friends of the North Andover Trails, the announcement of the guidebook. Glenn, there we go.
You have an assistant.
Oh, and Stan Limpert will be assisting.
Thank you.
This is working, Paul. I was talking about this with people last week about...
Hi, I'm Glenn Aspaslay and I'm President of Friends of North Andover Trails. I've been doing this for about, I'd say, three years now and we've seen the group grow from about eight people to now we have over 50 members.
Wow.
And when I joined, they had already been working on a guidebook for about five years. And I told them in 2014, we're going to have a guidebook. So we were only one year late, but it's my pleasure to present the Board today with our new guidebook.
It's great.
It's an 84-page, full-color guide and it has 16 chapters, one chapter for each place to go in town. And we brought the map that we've been using for our festivals just to give you an idea of how many great places there are to walk around in town, including town-owned land, trustees' reservations land, Green Belt properties, and state forests. And add it all up, it's about almost 30% of the town's land area. And this is your guide to exploring it all.
This is fantastic.
Thank you for all the effort you did to put this together and get this all. This is really great.
You're welcome.
When are we going to have an app?
The app is next. In the meantime, it's, we're selling this to residents for $15 on the website and in stores around town to raise money for printing the next edition and for trail projects around town.
Can you tell us which stores it's in so people may want to go directly to them?
Right now, it is at Smolak Farm while supplies last and by the end of the week we hope to have it in another half dozen stores.
Great.
You guys have a lot of events, too. Do you have anything coming up? Any trail walks or hikes or guided tours coming up?
We do, we've been doing monthly walks for about two years now and they've been really successful. Next walk, the August walk, we just went up to Boston Hill yesterday in the heat.
Yeah.
And the August walk will be, do you remember where that is?
It's on the website.
It's on the website, but we usually do the second Sunday of the month for the walk. And on the first, on the first Saturday of the month, we do trail work. And we'll be working on the Shoshine River Trail on August 1st, I believe. We're always looking for volunteers to help us clear the trails. It's easy stuff, loppers and string trimmers, keeping the trails open.
Do you want to tell them about Stevens?
Yeah, the one thing that made the cut for this book was we have a new map towards the back of the new Stevens to Stevens Trail. This was a joint effort between trustees' reservations and North Andover Trails. And it's a really great walking trail. It starts at the Stevens Coolidge Place and the Common and lets you walk completely off-road all the way to Wire Hill down to Stevens Pond. It was funded in part by the Community Preservation Act, funds from, I think, from the town meeting two years ago. And we built a fantastic trust bridge over a brook between Stevens Street and Pleasant Street. And the funds also went, I believe, to moving the fence at the town beach so that you can walk safely along the street there to get to the causeway and up into Wire Hill.
It's great.
This is, this is really a differentiator for our community. This is great. I mean, do you know of any other communities that have something this comprehensive? I mean, it's just really wonderful.
A lot, a lot of surrounding towns have, have pretty well-established guides, you know, and they add more detail with each, each edition. This is the first one to sort of take advantage of the full color format. So it really has a sort of a striking quality to it.
It truly does.
And I should also add, there were a half dozen nature photographers that contributed some amazing wildlife photos that will make you say, wow, I can't believe this was taken in North Andover.
So all these photos are local?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the, and thank all of you for everything you do. It's things like this that set North Andover apart from other communities and it's appreciated. This is great.
Thanks, Glenn.
It's really cool. I didn't know Stan was on the Trails Committee. Come on.
Does he ever have one at home?
I don't know.
Can you provide the list of the committees you're not on?
Yes, that would be shorter.
I actually, I actually do usually look at these open houses, not this book, but I have, and people, people do take them and, no, it is, it's great. And I see some photography from Glenn and others that are great. We do have a little bit later on the agenda, I was, I was going to ask Glenn if he wanted to stay, but he's probably pretty busy. We have something else having to do with connecting the trails, the Bay Circuit Trail, so that we have that request to send a light.
And it's actually, it's referenced in here, too, the Bay Circuit.
Well, you always had this theme about the beauty of North Andover, but this is a perfect...
You know, it's, it's interesting because being in real estate and, you know, working with the surrounding communities and working with brokers from, who are, work in both communities, I, the thing I hear over and over and over is that people just are so struck by how beautiful our town is and how much there is so much open space, even comparing to another town, which will remain...
Nameless.
That they say that the beauty of our town, I mean, each town has its own thing, but we really, we really should be very proud of what we have. And you know, it was the people who voted for it. They voted for it and they paid for it and fundraised for it and through CPA money. And I'll tell you, I think it's, it pays back in property values and everything else, so.
Certainly does. Next on this evening's agenda is Jeanne Anne Renner, if you want to come up, in regards to the, we had a downtown parking committee that I believe was formed in the fall of 2014. And they are now coming forward with findings and recommendations.
Hi, everyone. As Tracy said, the downtown parking committee was assembled in September of this past year. I'll provide a brief summary of our report that kind of identifies the findings and approach that we took. And at the end, if you'd like to answer any questions, and so there'll be questions and any feedback that you may have. The committee's mission was to assess the existing and the projected parking demand along Main Street and including the rear town hall parking lot, and to make appropriate recommendations to provide for safe and convenient parking for the town staff and the visitors to the town building and which supports the economic viability of Main Street's business corridor. To begin, we, we began with defining and documenting the existing conditions. That was our first priority, to first understand what we're up against, where the needs really were. And to do that, we collected data using a mobile app over a three-day period in early November. We surveyed each parking space along Main Street on a half-hour increment and the rear lot in an hour increment. We broke Main Street up into really two blocks, running from May Street to Cleveland, both sides of the street, and then the second block being from First Street to Second Street inclusive of the line spaces on First Street. And then the third piece is the rear lot in the town hall parking lot. Memmer Mac Valley Planning Commission actually helped us take that data, assemble it, and provide a data analysis of what the picture really looked like. Main Street does have some utilization peaks and some obvious hotspots, but in general, the average half-hour, half-hour increment over all three days never exceeded 67% occupancy. So like I said, there's some hotspots in different sections of Main Street, but for the most part, when it's all averaged, 67% utilization of a given parking space on average is what we found. The area in the rear lot was more of a concern. The utilization exceeded 90% on three different occasions and it exceeded 85% on four other time periods. There's a parking expert that we were referred to, Don Ed Schup, who's a professor at UCLA. He's noted that parking facility, once parking facilities reach an 85% capacity, that they've reached their effective capacity. Effective capacity is really when somebody has to begin to hunt for a space, either double back for a space or, or, you know, reroute and, and come back in a loop to try to find a parking space, or they'll actually just leave the area and seek their goods or services at an alternate location. So based on the survey data and the analysis that was provided, the committee had to establish a goal, what do we want to get to? And what we settled on was an 80% effective capacity as opposed to that 85%. Since the Main Street space utilization never did exceed 80%, we really emphasized on the need for additional parking in the rear parking lot. We also, while making that determination, we also were making recommendations regarding a more effective use of different parking areas along Main Street. So to meet the goal of 80% capacity, it would require 14 incremental parking spaces in the rear lot, bringing the total spaces to 95. So there's 81 currently that were surveyed. 14 additional would bring it to 95. If additional parking spaces were not a viable option, then we thought of reassigning current staff, utilizing the parking spaces there to maybe an alternate, alternate location. This determination of effective capacity and a goal to reach 80 was also up against what we know to be an additional need in the fall of '16 when the community and economic development offices will be relocating to space currently used by the fire department. When you take into account the community department staff, the visitors to community development, the four town-owned vehicles, the, on occasion, we have an intern or a senior volunteer, and you bring into the equation the current fire department personnel that will be relocating, it calls for an additional 13 incremental parking spaces to account for that. Bring in the total incremental need to 27 parking spaces or 108 total parking spaces to meet the 80%, 80% effective capacity. Now, prior to the research being conducted, there was some expectation, kind of right away where the committee went down the road of the town would need to acquire land along Main Street to, to gain additional parking or that a parking structure may need to be built on town property, that likely was going to be necessary. However, and we'll go through the recommendations shortly, but I believe our recommendations, when taken holistically, would allow the town to achieve the parking goal while eliminating the significant cost and complications associated with those two initial thoughts that we had. So we've made several recommendations and I believe Andrew has some of the data online so, with the attachments. The first of which was fairly simple. So when the fire station and the personnel relocate, there'll be room to add three additional parking spaces to the front of the fire station apron. So this is a, should be attachment B, Andrew. So right in front of the apron, there's space for three, and directly across from that in front of the Boston Chowder, there's room for one space. That space had never been delineated in the past because the trucks actually used that area to back their trucks into the bay, but there is room to add one. And our thought here was to actually delineate the one existing in front of the fire station and the three additional to be added as half-hour parking, and to allow for quick trips in and out of the town hall. Those could be hours delineated, eight to four, or eight to five, whatever the case may be. And not only to serve community development offices, which will be located on this front-facing side of the building, but finance and the clerk's office often have frequent inquiries, the assessor's office. So it'll be a quick in-and-out, half-hour increment to service the town hall. So from there, we'll move to a little more complex one, but the rear lot. There were several alternatives looked at in the rear lot. And we'll go right to the recommendation. If you prefer, I can step you through a series of alternatives that were looked at, and then I will provide information on the one that we deemed that would fit. The first page just shows what exists today. There's 81 existing parking spaces. This is an old plan that actually Gene Willis did a lot of this legwork in terms of developing the engineering here. The note there, there could be five possible added at the driveway. That's really option number two, where if we were to make that entrance on page two as a one-way in, you can see that rail, the dark green, there's five spaces lining it. That's where the wooden railroad guardrail is. If it was one-way in, we could delineate five parking spaces, and you see the lower in-and-out down the bottom maintains in-and-out, although the parking spaces within the lot are all reorientated to kind of make that a little bit squarer coming out. Today, the spaces almost go right up to the exit.
I identified where it says five in the middle of the screen. That's along the wooden guardrail. Traffic had been allowed to, continues to be allowed to travel in both directions. There's no parking signs that have been posted for quite a period of time along that guardrail. Quite frankly, we've been fairly aggressive about the enforcement recently, but in the past, people have, when there's been a lot of activity in that lot, parked along the guardrail. And then it does two things. Either you have a really difficult circumstance running two-way on that roadway, or more folks start to come in and out of this lower level that actually heads toward the condos, and that's a particularly complicated spot. So after a couple of meetings, we've continued to allow this both directions, but we've eliminated the parking, or at least started to enforce the parking where Gene has identified these five spots. So in this case, by going one way, you reduce that contest, head-on contest between folks coming in and out. This piece, by the way, is part of an easement that the town has, as is several other parcels in the slot.
So although five's being added, you can see the net is really a gain of only three because the lower end there, there's some reorienting in order to make that one-way in and out in the lower end a little bit safer. On page three, this provides for 86 total spaces, but here, there's fairly significant change. It would remain a one-way, well, it would become a one-way in with the five spaces along the guardrail. It closes off the lower in-and-out and would have a one-way exit onto Saunders Street.
So everybody knows where we're now suggesting that close-off happen, right? So heading toward the wooden bridge, this is currently two-way traffic coming in, and this proposal would close that to all traffic?
Where that green area is lower than the guardrail today, that is a sloped grass, some tree area. That would all remain that sloped area in this configuration?
Still a gain of 1/5.
Right. So not a significant gain. So if you go to page four. On page four, we gain 11. But here, that sloped area that I just referred to where the guardrail is, would actually become a retaining wall in order to pick up a few spaces in the lower parking. Again, it remains one-way in along the guardrail and one-way out onto Saunders Street, but 11 spaces are able to be picked up with that retaining wall. Adds a little cost. On page five, it's nearly identical. The only thing here is the landscaping of the islands. Typically, they're at either end of a parking aisle. This doubles them up at one end to provide a wider lane at the lower end, in-and-out, easier to back up, back in. So that was really the only change. It's still 92 spaces, 11 incremental, one-way in, one-way out with a retaining wall. And lastly, and the plan that we would recommend, allows for 111 total parking spaces. And I'll have to add a little caution. All of these would require a professional survey to confirm this data. This is somewhat of an older plan that we used as a base. What this allows for is, everybody understands Main Street is at the lower end of the screen, so a one-way in, and it would actually be a straight shot into the parking lot. There's a slope there that, today, as you go through the Sutton Pond condominiums, you're going down a slope. So we try to maintain that grade, but to carry it straight into our parking lot, it would require a retaining wall. Someone had to see on that, but the retaining wall would be where the guardrail is, and it becomes a lighter green line on the screen here, up towards Main Street. So that lighter green going into the darker green where the retaining wall had been in the previous. And then there's a retaining wall on the other side where the Sutton Pond monument sign is today.
So coming off the bottom, the bottom of the image here, on our right, I think everybody's right, depending on you looking at this.
My right.
You're coming down Main Street from St. Mike's. Currently, it's two-way traffic, and all of traffic enters and exits down the roadway that appears where the words "one-way" sit, this space in there. So this proposal would bring only traffic coming into the parking lot. It would also make that road straight. So once you stop down the road, instead of bearing left around this turn, that's been historically the case, or entering, or heading down Sutton, toward the Sutton Pond condos, and quickly taking a left into the parking lot, this allows you, from a visual perspective, a direct line of sight to come in that roadway and get right down into the parking lot. So it would require some improvements to that area to allow direct access into that. But by doing that, and placing in a retaining wall to do it, and eliminating the need for the use of this turn, and realigning the rest of the spots, you're picking up a net of 30, right? 30 parking spots on the backlot.
That's used on the retaining wall.
We can do a site visit. The grade from, if you started to walk down the roadway that leads off of Main Street down into this entrance, currently entrance and exit, and you would look straight ahead, what you will see is a hill. So the road bears right to Sutton or bears left around it. What you would look at is, you can see the parking lot, but topographically, the parking lot from that roadway, it starts to go downhill, but if you wanted to go straight ahead, you'd go over a hill and down. So in order to make that, so you can drive directly straight into the parking lot, the grade needs to change. And because the grade needs to change, the retaining wall needs to be constructed.
I guess maybe, I don't know, how will it affect the parking lot for the business?
Well, there's a couple of different options. It really depends, right? So there's a couple of different options. Under this, and we can talk about specifics, everybody would enter one way and exit another. So for the parking directly behind the business, they would enter the way they've always entered.
So their entrance?
They have to go all the way?
Well, so does everybody else.
All the way around and up?
Not up. They would go out the back. These last three proposals, I'll assume a Saunders Street exit.
How do they get in it, though?
Their entrance is higher than that retaining wall. It's closer to Main Street than that retaining wall.
See this where it says new retaining wall? What's not cut in here is their driveway. We're not eliminating the driveway.
That's what I was thinking we were eliminating there.
And they have an exit out into, they can go onto the one-way.
Explain to me the areas of land swap. They seem random, and I don't understand that.
Okay, do you want to try?
You can try.
Okay. So I will not bore you with all the details, but beginning in the 1980s, we did some exchanges in the form of easements. Those look something like, so if you're looking at the image on the screen where it says dumpster up here, that dumpster actually isn't currently there any longer.
Right.
It what used to be there, right? So see this blue diagonal that runs from dumpster toward the one-way?
Mm-hmm.
So it might be, I'm going to point on this just because, if you guys want to look. So see this diagonal?
Mm-hmm.
If you then went also this way and created a triangle, that is land that the town doesn't own.
Okay.
But the town owns the balance of this lower level, except for that parcel. Town also owns, well, this is public right away, the town does not own this piece. The town does own this, this, and this. And so there were exchanges made, so that the town would have access to enter this and come across this roadway. We never took any action on this. That's currently private-owned.
Do we know who owns it?
Yes, we do. This is all one party, the town owns.
Same party.
It's the same party. It's two parties, the town and another party.
Right.
And so the town, in order to gain access here, gave up these three spots and gave a right for that property owner to allow people to park here. Quite frankly, today, every parking spot is open game. We don't have permits, we don't have stickers. We have folks who live and work here, parking all over the parking lot. We have folks who reside in a building, parking in here, where technically, they're supposed to have preference. There's no sign, there's no enforcement. It's just, when a spot's open, that's where we park.
Have we even broached the subject with the property owner?
We've broached the conversation with the property owner several different occasions about what the future looks like. But quite frankly, until the report came out and we get some direction of the board, that's what's an important next step, and I do have a meeting scheduled with them again.
Okay.
It's our opinion that if this approach, where they think was well-designed by the committee, one, it gives you direct vision. So this competition of people coming in and out of a very crowded parking lot, which we all know creates some level of hazard, gets eliminated because you're creating one flow. Two, you can see everything coming in and out. It's not a mystery of someone coming around the corner, or someone crossing the bridge. I've seen trucks crossing the wooden bridge in the wrong direction coming in this, trying to get out onto Main Street with a business on this corner and a business on this corner as people are coming in and out is very, very difficult. This provides for a much safer route with 30 more parking spots, but probably eliminates the need for the town to have this space as access. Because this becomes the roadway. People come in and out, and yet it still affords the property owner access for his people to come into the parking lot and exit the parking lot using the property that's owned by this parcel. We probably no longer need to cede these spots, and we probably no longer, again, need to deal with this. And we think in the long term, if we're going to own from here to here, but not this triangle, it probably doesn't make sense not to own the triangle. But that's a little bit of a longer-term view. So this is just sort of dead space in the middle of the triangle, that we're given right to pass over to get into these other spots. So I'm sure there were decisions in the mid-1980s that were about what the traffic flow is at the time, and it seemed to make sense if we were going to come in here, and the traffic was a little less, that you'd want this road, because maybe we didn't want to cut it, I'm not sure why. And so we had a need for this road. I think over time, that that need will decrease.
You come in there to the paper.
You do in the loop, and then go back.
Yeah.
It used to be. So you kind of went in and around.
So what Gene has identified, the committee identified, these are the areas of land swap. This wasn't a land swap, but the ability to provide preferred parking for the tenants and businesses here. Again, there's no signage, it's not used in that way. This provided sort of pedestrian access as a path that leads this way, there's a path between the buildings here. This provided that pedestrian access, and then these spots were, again, sort of part of the deal, and it was done 30 years ago, and I'm sure for very legitimate reasons, but those may have changed now, given our need to want to expand the use of the lot. Everybody knows my passcode. You can have whatever it is, it's a public document. For those of you who didn't see it at home, it's my stock date with the town of North Endo.
This one assumes the exit on Saunders Street, has anybody discussed it with names on Saunders Street about the additional traffic?
No. So we're just, this is all eliminated.
We'd welcome your feedback and concerns, but a public meeting would most likely be a step.
Yeah, I love seeing the 30 total spaces. Concerned how the folks on Saunders Street?
There's only three or four that are concerned with Saunders Street.
Because you're not going to run them straight out, going to send them out Cleveland.
Maybe I'm not as familiar with the Sutton Pond exit and entrance. That's not one way for them.
It's currently one way.
It's supposed to be one way.
It's supposed to be.
It's supposed to be.
And it is permanent.
It's only.
One way in, they can't come back.
Generally, it's one way. I think there have been times that when the males were a little more active, you had some folks that found the way down that road to sort of cut into the back of the lot, but that's, that may increase again, but at this point, it's not significant. It should be noticed in terms of flow here, this is all about really 11 to 4. Gene, correct me on times. We're not talking about 8:00 in the morning, 8:00 in the morning on Main Street of the back parking lot. So from some about 5, 4:00 or 5:00 PM till 8:00 in the next morning, Main Street, First Street, Second Street, Saunders Street, the parking lot. It is at about 10% of utilization, so.
But we don't want that. We want it.
Well, but that's what it is, and we can't address that piece right now. So really, what we're talking about in terms of flow, inbound in the morning would mean mostly employees, and then folks arriving at the senior center closest at 11:00 at noon. Those would all be coming off Main Street. The real difficulty now, if you get there, is trying to come in and out on Main Street, say at 1:00 or 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, that we really need to dilute the load of that, because in some cases, that's 90 vehicles coming in and out of that one spot. They lean through a little bit, and we really need to find a way to give them, by having one entrance and one exit, it spreads the load out. And we're not talking about anybody entering into the backside off of Saunders Street at all, but only exiting, and that exit would take place typically 2:00 to 4:00, 2:05. And I think there's been some conversations about whether or not we would, and this is really nuanced suggestions, but the possibility that really would have to take the first turn off of Saunders and not proceed further down Saunders, Cleveland.
And that may be limited to those elements, maybe between 11 and 5, left-hand turn only at Cleveland Street. And Don's on the committee, he actually brought up that suggestion, that that's used around a lot of schools in other towns, where you can only enter a roadway during certain times or not enter a roadway during certain times.
Not everybody pays attention.
No, but there's.
Yeah, and my other concern is all the various one-way directions, considering the folks that'll be driving that mostly.
One-way directions, so, well, I think.
You can't run both.
We can't take a right, we know that. It's going to be a left-hand turn.
Yeah, I think it's just signage, maybe we want to make sure it's clearly marked.
Well, Saunders Street.
Right.
Yeah. Saunders. Saunders Street is going to become more busy regardless, because there'll be new residential going in along, you know, once the development starts. It is past Cleveland, but I mean, they will, Saunders in general is going to experience an uptick in traffic.
Well, I think Saunders, from where Saunders ends, coming in the backside and then in off the entrance off Main Street, it would be, it wouldn't make as much sense of improvement, but I am certain of that point.
Yeah, so looking at this sort of inlaid image.
I don't have issues with it, I'm just.
We're going to see more traffic, period, I think, if that's the case.
But for people to remember, there was a lot of traffic around the Brad Street School and on Saunders Street.
Oh, yeah, before we closed, I mean, it was, that was a popping, hubby, buzzing neighborhood. So I don't really have issue with bringing kind of life back down to that neighborhood either, so.
Some other.
But I don't live there.
Just because I know we got focused a little bit, this happens to be an area of Saunders Street is at the top, I mean, Cleveland's at the top, but we're also seeing a pretty dramatic underutilization along, this is First Street from Main Street going up alongside the mall, all the way, literally no one parks.
I do.
This is the side of the CVS. No, you don't. No, you don't park there. Alongside the CVS where the drive-thru is, literally no one parks there.
I used to when Star was owned.
No, no one parks in front of Star. Star is, Star is. So there is some opportunity in some of these other roadways that I think that there are additional spots that people will begin to utilize, but currently, this is where some of the underutilization take place.
I think that committee did a bang-up job, and the presentation is fantastic. I guess for me, and I don't know about my fellow members, but for me, my questions would be really simple. Where do we go from here?
That's a good question. Well, although Gene identified the recommendations as holistic, meaning that they get to satisfying the requirement of the committee, which was the 80%, there certainly are, they can be taken incrementally if the plan is to get to the total. Doesn't mean that all has to happen at once. Certainly, some of the improvements that they're recommending, some of the other options can be done in the shorter term.
In the bank.
Working, bank.
Didn't somebody mention?
Because they've got that back.
They've got that back lot.
We currently have, with help of Laurie, we have the ability to have employees park in a section of the bank. What I think the committee has found, and our experience shows us, is the further we travel from the normal course of travel for where someone can pull in the parking lot, the less likely we're going to get people using. So if it's a line of sight, if you can see town hall from where you're parking, good chance they'll use it. The further you move away from that, the less likely. And at this point, we're not taking any steps to mandate parking in areas. I think that has all kinds of other complications. So although there are other property acquisition and lease options, I think the steps that could be taken, recommended by the committee that do not require that are better first steps than starting at the acquisition side, because there's no guarantee people will use the space where you buy.
I'd like to see something in regards to parking, you know, done in a relatively swift manner, as, when are we looking to open town hall? Fall of 2016?
December of 2016.
December of 2016. Okay, so there's a little time, but, I mean, they should coincide, is my point. Would be great if they could coincide.
It seems like some of the on-street parking may be like low-hanging fruit, if we could, you know, stripe those and get those parking, but then I guess.
So Second Street is really just kind of housekeeping, cleaning it up, because one side of Second Street, they park on all the time. School Street is used all the time. First Street just looks, it's so much more appealing. It's lined on both sides, it's delineated. So what are the recommendations to line School Street and one side of Second Street? It's not incremental, it's just aesthetics.
Yes.
But the other side of Second Street, we're recommending, and that would be six incremental spaces. The ones in front of the fire station, in front of Boston Chowder, I mean, they're just quick hits that can certainly coincide.
Right.
Along the CVS building, on the pharmacy side, seven spaces fit there. They can be delineated, whether they're permit-parked or not at this point. Some things, I guess, we can take a wait-and-see approach. But delineating them, there's plenty of room in the width of the roadway. I think they'd be utilized more if they were delineated. I think any space would be utilized more if it's delineated, and I think it's just a cleaner effect, so.
And I guess the other question I would have is there, is there like a short-term fix for the parking lot back here that would get us more spaces, but then be able to move to the longer term, you know, without wasted effort to do that?
There's not really, the one-way in and leaving it two-way at the lower end, in-and-out, allows for those five. That's probably the quickest hit, but it would be one-way at the top and still remain two-way at the end, and you're still coming out onto Main Street. So some of the real benefit was that egress onto Main Street at different periods of the day is really, really tough, and whether it's going to be left-hand turn onto Cleveland during certain hours or not, the two points of egress, Cleveland Street is a much cleaner look onto Main Street when you get there.
Oh, absolutely.
Saunders Street, at different times of the day, that's tough, too. I mean, there's no question about it, depending on Heavenly's business, and the backup from Sutton Street up is actually reaching that area now, so it gives you two points of entry, of exit, and the sightlines, I think, at Cleveland Street are better, so.
I think what it comes down to, to a certain extent, sorry, what it comes down to a certain extent is that a number of the different options are doable and doable quickly. They don't fundamentally change the parking issues we have unless we do one of two things, take some form of the recommendation of the last option of the parking committee, or choose to aggressively pursue land, which has a seven-figure-plus cost when all is said and done. So is the cost of acquiring land in the area, at the time you buy the property, level the property, improve the property, and then maintain the property, you're weighing that against the impact of modifying the backlot. Some cost, not a tremendous amount of cost, and the impact of changing the circulation. That's the. That's the, that's the difficult decision the board has, quite frankly.
I think that just as a preliminary decision, that maybe we should consider which properties would be advantageous for us to acquire and at least get a first right of refusal on them instead of having to go adverse possession, you know, for future expansion. But it's just a comment on what you were saying. This was a fantastic report. The committee did a fantastic job. This is a really great, comprehensive report. And committee did a great job with it.
Do you want to identify the members of the committee? This is a bit up to you.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, several are on vacation this week. But we do have Joe LaGrasse, Gene Willis, Donald Stewart, and Janine McAvoy provided public comment, and Joyce. Yes, sorry, Joyce, I look forward to you. And Joyce is here.
I think it was a well-suited committee. I think you brought people from all different. It's a great job. It really, I'm sure it was a great job on this.
Great.
So is there some specific direction? I'll look to either the, I mean, I can forward the report to PD, which has seen it. But certainly, as it relates to having public works as it relates to those things are not associated with the back lot, and have them look at those as we start to reline and, you know, if there's any reason we shouldn't look at those. And then I probably need some direction as to whether or not we should, what the next steps would be in terms of dealing with the Town Hall lot. Because it's July. December of sixteen will come really fast.
Really quick.
And especially with some of the things that are being recommended. If it's going to be an option, for instance, like a ground lease or an acquisition, that's going to take town meeting and some other steps. So whatever direction you could provide would be helpful.
I would suggest, and I don't know what everyone else would, but I think that you begin those preliminary conversations with the landowners that you need to.
You have to draw back, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, yes, of everything else with the D.P.W. and doing, you know, the low-hanging fruit out front. And then begin the conversations. I suppose we won't really know until you begin those conversations.
Yeah, those, again, what's required there, and I don't mean this in any, I know the board will understand that, but what's required out back is if there's a public need, then it can happen.
Of course it can happen, right. But we'd like to have a conversation prior.
Yes. Any land acquisition, fee simple land acquisition by a town is called a taking. So.
Yeah, and I use the wrong word. It's not, I know you call it.
Whether we call it friendly or not, and I'm very supportive of friendly. It's all a land-taking. Yeah.
No, you seem wrong.
So I think that's not the direction.
It seems like, yeah.
We don't need to form a vote on this, just kind of direction.
No.
Logical next step. Great. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All of you. Great job.
Thank you.
We need to go back to the approval of minutes from the beginning of the meeting when I jumped the gun.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from, let's see. Would that, would have been, what was the last?
Twenty-second.
July twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, as written.
Do I have a second on that? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, June twenty-second. I said July.
Oh, you said July.
June twenty-second.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, we're going to move on to consent items. And again, very happy to accept donations from Wheel Abraider in the amount of five thousand dollars for the Fourth of July fireworks. They are fantastic community partners, I must say.
I need some clarification on this.
We get five thousand from Wheel Abraider. Didn't this pass you? We get five thousand from their friends and five thousand from somebody else?
From MOLFA.
MOLFA.
So this is for next year's fireworks.
So we got some in the bank.
So we got some in the bank next year.
Drawing good interest, right?
They will contribute us to this year, and any dollars left over roll into next year.
So move up the board of selectmen to accept the donation of Wheel Abraider in the amount of five thousand dollars to be used for the two thousand and fifteen.
All those in favor?
Fourth of July fireworks. Would it, okay. Would it be two thousand and fifteen? Would that be the appropriate year that I say? I mean, it would be two thousand and sixteen, right?
Well, we'll use their money and any money left over. It'll be low.
Don't put the year in.
How's that?
Yeah, I should eliminate that.
Fourth of July fireworks.
My cheat sheet ahead of time. Shame on me. Look at that.
Leave out any date reference.
Yeah, leave out the date reference. Great.
Fourth of July.
So Phil's, I don't have to keep doing that like we used to, right? Okay, go. I can do whatever I want. All right. Within reason, you know? Don't get me nervous, because then I will say things I shouldn't. So, and then I, yeah, exactly. Then I'll be read for the rest of it. Okay. Next donation from Wheel Abraider. Again, incredibly generous and super community partners. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, move that the board of selectmen accept the donation of Wheel Abraider in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the trauma intervention program.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's fantastic. See, we're actually, is a donation for Franklin School, but we're going to remove this. And actually, it should be voted on by the school committee, not us.
Okay.
And we're going to move on to our appointments. Would either one of you like to speak to that?
For approval of Brian Schekman for the Sustainability Committee?
Brian's a low history teacher, social studies teacher, who came to the appointment subcommittee seeking to join the Sustainability Committee. Seems to be really motivated, really interested in environmental sustainability, energy sustainability. And so we have an opening. And I think we were unanimous, all three of us, in recommending that the full board appoint Brian.
Do I have a second for that nomination?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then we have Nathan Weinreich for the Z.B.A.
So Nathan is a younger guy. He's under the age of thirty. He and his wife, his wife's a lifelong resident of town. And they live over in the library neighborhood. He came to our meeting really enthusiastic to join the board, the zoning board of appeals. And I think it would be great to get new blood. Right now, we have a few openings on that board. He's looking to join as an associate member, so not even a full member.
Good to learn. It's fabulous.
Oh, yeah. And his willingness to take on, you know, what can sometimes be a very tough position as Mr. Valenport knows, right?
Mr. Valenport certainly knows.
So I'd like to motion that Nathan Weinreich be appointed or move that the board of selectmen appoint Nathan Weinreich to the zoning board of appeals as an associate member for a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. As always, I thank, behalf of all of us, I thank all of the volunteers in this community, because we would come to a screeching halt without them. Next is a request of Alexandra Coakley from the North Annover Athletic Association to use Streets in North Annover for a five K. On Saturday, October twenty-fifth. Is Alexandra here?
No.
No? Okay.
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Request of Sarah Durkin of North Annover High School Music Department to use the town common for a summer coffeehouse on Thursday, August thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, from five to eight. I don't think she's here either, so.
Move approval. She does a great job.
She does.
Well, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Request of Sandra Shakder-Carrian. I'm sorry if I didn't say that correctly. My apologies. Of St. Gregory's Armenian Church to close a portion of Main Street in water to Merrimack Street for Sunday for their annual event.
I spoke to Sarah earlier today, because there was a little bit of confusion on our application that we did discuss, that it said that they will begin the music right after the eleven o'clock mass. It's a twelve o'clock mass. So we thought, and she agreed. Yeah. I said, is there something that we don't, has something changed that I need to know about? And I called St. Michael's, and we still have a twelve o'clock mass, which has been going for a zillion years. So Sarah did agree to amend it, to say that the music would begin right after the twelve o'clock mass. So I would just. It's for St. Gregory Church. And it's actually Merrimack Street. It's not Merrimack Street, only because of St. Michael's parking lot. So it's actually at the entrance of their park, their property line between our churches. So that they can use, they have access because of the twelve o'clock mass to come and go as they please. That we don't go to Merrimack Street.
Oh, okay.
So that way, our van can set up in the middle of the street and be ready for, because we lose out forty-five minutes.
Right.
We normally start at twelve o'clock. So that's the difference. So we don't block off up to Merrimack Street. St. Michael's has access to their parking lot, their school lot, and their church parking lot as well. And up to the crosswalk in front of our church. My only other question and concern was, we discussed it. We're thinking of having a petting zoo for the children with nothing. They're all in cages. And some, some of them have to be. Some of the adults have to be, too. I said it shouldn't be a problem, as long as there's no snakes. No snakes. There are chickens, ducks, a little goat, and what did I say? Ducks, chickens, rabbits, and little bunnies. And the children are allowed to handle them with the two business owners. And we also may have a mini pony for the children, the smaller children, like ten and under, to ride around like on the church property. Or on the, we don't, if it's okay on the sidewalk, if it's okay with the town, and if it's okay for the owners. I don't know if it's good for the animal. And if not, it'll be on our grass, you know? So that's kind of like the only difference. And by the way, congratulations to you, too.
Thank you.
Any questions? Concerned? Excuse me?
You don't have a small pony for me?
Well, I actually asked for a little larger one. The kids have like ten, I want to go on one, too. They're adorable.
So there was a condition by the police department to hire a detail for that.
Again? I said them last year, and I still got a bill.
It's a recommendation.
You know, whatever we need to do, we'll take care of it. It's not a problem. And actually, it's kind of good to have. And we do feed them. We take care of them.
Well, that's good.
No, we have to. We take care of our men and ladies.
Are there any permits required for a petting zoo or horses or anything?
No.
Yeah, that was my concern.
It's like a birthday party. You can get a petting zoo in your backyard. You don't need any special.
Yeah, but this is on, you know, I wasn't sure. That's why I.
Oh, are you going to do it on the street or on the front?
Well, in between the pot, it's blocked. So it's going to be, again, between the crosswalk and our, St. Michael's and our church. But it's going to be on our church property. So I wanted to make sure before we discussed it at our meeting.
But it's going to be on your property.
Hopefully, but it'll be on the site, well, again.
Can we just replay? I feel really good. If you remove the word hopefully from what it says in your correspondence, that the petting zoo will be on church property.
If that's what you say, that's what I'll say, too.
It gets a little less clear.
Absolutely. It'll be on our church property.
That's great.
There we go.
Get the goat?
Great job.
Take care of the lawn?
A whole approval subject to that the petting zoo is on church property and that the live music starts after the twelve o'clock mass at St. Michael's.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You're all welcome to join us. Please come on that day. You'll have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Don, don't write in the post.
Mm-mm. No snakes.
We're looking to, all right. Next, we have to vote to send a letter in support for the state for a crosswalk on Route one fourteen near Berry Street. In all honesty, can we have a little discussion about this? Only because it scares me. Should I not be scared of a crosswalk on one fourteen?
Well, they do in other communities. It's the Bay Circuit. It's so you can connect all the trails.
Right.
They have it in other communities where they put like a flashing light that only works upon demand.
Okay.
So that the people, the hikers, can cross safely. It's way up by Berry, so.
Well, Berry's not, Berry's going to be quite busy in the next couple of years.
I understand. And I was thinking, gee, could we tie it into whatever? But it's not, it doesn't line up really well. So the letter is just to ask the state to look into what it's their road and pay for it would be a great thing. But this is, again, I think they've had them in Topsfield. They have them in some other communities crossing, you know, busy roads. But it's a way to just loop it all together, so.
It does make me a little scared.
Would that be North Annover PD that would do a study to see what the traffic is like over there and the impact?
Typically, the state would just. The state would let us know what they would require. Would they, they may have conducted a traffic study over there themselves in terms of part of some improvements that we're doing, and it really depends. So they may say, well, if the PD conducts a traffic study. But typically, traffic studies done on state roads would be done by Mass DOT.
I would be comfortable with sending a letter asking them to look at the feasibility. I wouldn't necessarily be comfortable asking them to support it I wouldn't necessarily be comfortable asking them to support it, just to look at where it would make sense to put it and what we could do to make it work or what they could do to make it work.
Kind of has to come out where the trail.
It's got to come out where the trail is. Because you don't want them walking on 114 to quarter mile to get to the cross.
Just connect Berry Street to Harold Parker, right?
Right. Right. I don't know, I mean, it could be a very positive thing because you're going to have all the housing and more people that may be utilizing Harold Parker from the Berry Street development. I mean, I personally have, it scares me. It frightens me.
Wouldn't it scare you more though, if people just tried to cross without the flashing light of the warning?
Well, it seems like creating a sidewalk.
Yeah, it's a false sense of safety.
Crosswalk is like creating a invitation to cross. I mean, I'm certainly in favor of sending a letter to study the situation because certainly we need to get more information on it. But it seems to me, yeah, it's very scary to cross anywhere on 114. I mean, we just went through the whole thing with Merrimack College and trying to make that safer and what they're doing there, some improvements, but it just seems that that's a real, real scary place to cross anything.
I'm sure they'd have, I mean, they'd have to do a study anyways.
They would anyways, they're not going to just say, yeah, sounds good.
So that's why I would support a letter to make a study. And they may come back and say, no way, it's really just too dangerous, or it's just not doable safely. But I think without that, we would never know, so we need to, I would support that.
It's not our road, they need to get their permission no matter what happens.
Right.
So a letter that said something like, the Board of Selectmen is interesting of having the state explore the possibility of a pedestrian crossing around, across 114 at, you know, the junction of Berry Street and Harold Parker.
And I would put in, in support of the Bay State Circuit Trail or something like, reference the organization, that it's not just like, hey, we just want.
Hey, random.
Put a random cross.
Random cross.
Do you feel comfortable with that? Do you feel like?
Yeah, no, I mean, I was asked by the trail people and I said, yep, well, I have to put you in touch with some state officials and that's how it began, so. Great, I mean, they're very excited about it because they're really trying to close that loop and I think it's a good thing. But of course, they're not going to do it unless it doesn't meet safety requirements and.
So do we have a formal motion?
Sure. I move that the Board of Selectmen send a letter to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts asking them to please explore and encourage the possibility of adding a crosswalk across Route 114 at the intersection of Berry Street and the.
Trail.
Massachusetts Trail. Well, the Bay Circuit Alliance Communities Trail.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Next is a request to dispose of surplus vehicle by the DPW.
Chairman, there's been a request by DPW Director Bruce Thibodeau to surplus a van that actually was a youth center van and had traveled its course and it's time to go away.
And we've replaced it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of DPW Director Bruce Thibodeau to surplus youth center vehicle 206 per his memorandum to the town manager dated July 9th, 2015.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. No licensing, sorry.
My first go around, did nothing.
No, but we do have a public hearing.
Joyce withheld those on purpose.
Joyce. Do we have to open a public hearing?
Yes, you do, there's some very needed instructions.
Yes, there is.
So move that the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing for the request of Columbia Gas to install a rectifier, ground bed and rectifier pole across from 56 Great Pond Road.
You're here, right? Bay State's not even here.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, I'm like, you're at Bay State, I'm looking at your shirt, they're not even here.
Yeah, well, I think we should just.
Columbia Gas, oh well.
I think we should at least table it, I don't want to talk about this.
We open the public hearing.
We do have a motion on the table, we've never voted to open the public hearing.
I will not close, no closing.
The motion to open it right now, I'll second the motion to open the public hearing.
I thought we already opened.
We did that, so we have to leave it still open.
We didn't actually?
No, we didn't actually.
We didn't actually, so we have a second and we're open. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are now in.
Continue the public.
Just continue.
Public hearing, may I have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We will continue the public hearing to a later day.
I think we need to move out, move out.
No, no, no. So now, we have Comcast. Comcast has petitions in regards to Willow Street and Flagship Drive.
To open another public.
Good, no, we're already open, we don't have to open another one. We do have to open another one?
Yeah.
Difficult here?
Yeah.
My apologies.
Yeah, motion to.
It's my first day, sorry.
Have we closed, we haven't actually closed a prior public hearing?
No, that one's suspended, so now we are going to make a motion to.
Now we have to move to close that public hearing?
No, no.
No, we already did that.
The next step, every public hearing should be taken separately, so the next step is to open the public hearing for.
I move to open a public hearing for Comcast petitions to install underground conduits of Willow Street and Flagship Drive.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in a public hearing for Comcast. Please proceed.
Good evening, my name is Steve Walling from Comcast, I have Rick Mayo here from Mira Construction, that will be performing the construction work if approved. Starting on Willow Street, we're planning on installing two four-inch conduits roughly 1,500 feet to provide service to, all the way down to the end of Flagship. This kind of ties in with the other petition that we'll also talk about. We're looking to service new customers on Willow Street.
Flagship Willow, they're all a business box.
Yes, commercial.
It's just commercial, so it's not going to tie into the neighborhoods up in the back there or will it?
Well, eventually, all of our plant ties in for to commercial and residential, so yes, and it's typically a diverse path. If one route was to get on, we'd be able to backfeed it to keep those customers up and running, whether it be commercial or residential.
Okay.
So it's just being able to offer more service to.
Yeah. Does anybody have additional questions?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now closed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How about it? Look, we closed okay, we just stumbled to get there. We're all good. Okay, we currently have, you're all set.
So we have the second petition.
No, we just approved both.
Oh, so that was both, oh, okay.
You're all set.
That was easy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, have a great night. No old business this evening. We do have new business, road widening easement, Lot 4 on Boston Hill Road. I don't see, gee, I thought it was somebody else, I didn't realize it was Jean. Okay.
Is he in luck before public comment?
Yeah, that's odd.
Holy cow.
How do we have?
Good evening, Jean Willis, the town engineer, but I'm in front of the board tonight as a resident. This is a very unique, well, not very, it's uncommon situation, and there's some background. I live on Boston Hill Road, which is a small road, and my mother-in-law, we had a large piece of property. I, me and my wife had bought the barn off my mother-in-law, and it's a town-accepted road, and the lot was cut off for the barn. When we did that, the well was on my mother-in-law's property, didn't really matter, you know, now I'm selling my house. So we reconfigured the lot line, which was my house, my barn. I have two larger plans, if you'd want to look, or if you want to look, I can let you see that. But basically, the lot line was configured. Boston Hill Road is a town road, so by right, I guess it can be developed within the stone walls, even though it doesn't necessarily meet it. So a conversation was had when I went to planning to reconfigure the lot lines, and they said, well, if somebody wants to come here, shouldn't that be, shouldn't the ability to widen the road be possible? And so I said, well, okay, we can do that, we can put a widening easement on the lot that's my house, so that if the developer of the larger piece of land further back wants to come up, the planning board can say, well, you need to widen the road, and he can't say, no, I can't, because I've only got between the two stone walls. So I really am ambivalent about this. I'm encumbering the lot that I'm selling, so it's kind of costing me money, and I don't know what advantage it's giving to the land that's after this lot, because from what I understand, the land has a right to develop Boston Hill Road. And they can come in and just say, this is it, this is the best we can do. If there's this easement across my lot, planning can negotiate with them and say, well, yes, there's more room than just between the stone walls, and the town has an easement and will let you make the road nicer. So I spoke with Andrew, and I'm here in front of the board to say what, it's a road widening easement that's going to go to the town, it's going to be recorded across Lot 4, and I'm selling Lot 4, so.
May I ask you, are you restricted because of the stone walls that there, are they historical stone walls that you can't?
No, no, it's, it would be the fee ownership of the street. So say, the person that wanted to develop the land, he can come up, it's a town road, public way, and he can do what's called a road improvement plan. It's not a subdivision, it's not going to planning board, it's a road improvement plan, and he's constrained by, with, between the walls. So if there's this easement, he could say to the board, well, I'd like to make it wider, or I'd like to regrade it, but I can't because I'm restricted between the walls. This gives the board the ability to say, well, yes, it's restricted between the walls, but we also have this widening easement, so you can make the road better if you want to, and if you want to make us happy, you can make it better than if it's constricted between the stone walls, so.
But for you personally, you don't care if it gets one way or the other, it's just a few hoops?
When it came up, when it came up in, we were reconfiguring the lot lines, actually, I'd almost prefer not to because I'm encumbering Lot 4 that I'm selling. So without that easement, Lot 4 is nicer. But it came up, it came up that, you know, while we're reconfiguring it, so the lot, the plan that was approved shows a widening easement, but it hasn't been recovered, recorded. I'll show you the plan.
I'm going to put it up on the screen, Jean, because I think to get the right perspective on what we're talking about, it's important. Can you hit the?
Yeah. My house lot is Lot 4.
Lot 3 is everything around it?
That's the larger land out back, was my mother-in-law's parcel. So Lot 4, my wife and I purchased the barn off of my mother-in-law, one acre, and built our house out there. That's for sale.
Is it currently for sale?
It's currently for sale, it's, there's a PNS. It's, so.
There's going to be development behind it?
Pardon me?
They don't want the easement.
Oh, yeah, they, well, that's the thing, the easement is right there for the road widening easement, so personally, I think it'd be better for me to not have that easement on Lot 4 when I'm selling it. But the conversation came about when I came because the well wasn't, you can see the dotted line was the old lot line. That's when we were just, you know, the old time, and I'm living in my mother-in-law's and who cares where the well is? Well, now we're selling it and I'm sure the person cares where the well was. So we came and reconfigured the lot line to get the well on the Lot 4. So that, and in that point, the conversation was, well, you know, Boston Hill Road to Town Road, shouldn't there be some widening easement there? And, you know, I said, well, we'll put it in if you want, or. It was, it really wasn't with planning, it was with the planner, but pardon?
How wide is it currently? Is it currently or is it?
Yeah, it's probably, I think it varies all up and down, so it's probably about 25 feet there, and this is a 20-foot widening easement, so it'd be to a 40 feet.
What standard is like 25 feet, isn't it? I mean, that sounds like.
Well, it varies up and down, but see, it's very unusual. I think that they were thinking, well, further down the road, you know, it would be nice if we had this easement. If they don't, then they have no latitude, the board has no latitude when the developer comes in with his road improvement plan, they say, well, this would be nice if it was wider through here. He can say, no, I have to stay between the stone walls. If there's, if the town has a 20-foot widening easement, they can request the developer. Now, he still doesn't have to do it, he could still say, nope, I have a fee in the street, and he can take the board to court. But, you know, if the easement's there, he could probably widen it. If the easement's not there, and it's the person there, say, no, I'm not going to give you an easement, then, then the board is back to no, the road has to go between the stone walls.
Well, that would be my next question, you said it's under PNS right now. Are the people, I think you said they were aware of the.
They know, they know about it.
Why aren't they the ones requesting it then?
Because they're not, they're not, they don't own it.
But when they do own it though?
Well.
Because they're the ones that are going to live with it.
Well, it needs, they know about it, and I own it now, so that's why I'm going through trying to clean this all up now with the lot line and stuff.
So if I can, I spent about 30 minutes, so 25 or 30 minutes with Mr. Willis, and so what I'm going to explain to Mr. Willis is pretty consistent, I think what he'll hear is pretty consistent. So I've driven up to the property, it's difficult to provide a visual to what we're talking about, you go up Boston Hill Road, you pass two houses on your left, then, then you, in essence, where, at the top of the screen, you see sort of a semicircle in dotted lines at the top right, starts on the top right, get up here, I can't reach it, see the dotted lines? That's a, it's an easement across that parcel, which allows for utilities, water, sewer, and the pathway to get to Mr. Willis's home out back. So that easement crosses, so the road effectively, as you and I would know a road, ends right where that dotted line begins. Come up Boston Hill Road, and you, in essence, are staring at a home. There's what appears to be more of a hiking trail type clearance, and then what you, then you start to travel left, you believe you're in a public way, I, my own take, but that's really a driveway easement. You travel around the prop, one property, and you end up in Mr. Willis's property. I think the struggle here is, it is very difficult to see the benefit, as one could argue, it's hard to see the risk in fairness. But what we're talking about is nearly a million square feet in what's identified as Lot 3, which also has a property access off of Styles, I believe.
Styles is in a public way.
Well, I understand that, but this public way is a 1919 public way, not accepted by the community in sort of a traditional way. I assume somewhere back in 1919, someone thought it would be a neat way to cut from one part of town to another. It was between two rock walls, not formulated in any subdivision plan, not accepted in the way we accept roadways today.
From what I understand, the, it was, and the 1919 article was brought to town meeting to abandon it, and that didn't happen, they didn't vote it. So it was a town way, they said, do you want to abandon it, and they didn't abandon it, so from what I've been advised, it's still there.
I am not disputing it's a town way, I think what I'm trying to create is the visual understanding that this more looks like a hiking trail than it does anything close to a public.
Absolutely, it's overgrown with large trees, the grades are, absolutely.
It's a 1919 accepted road that's not paved, that is a, that is basically a tree-lined trail. That's the best, would that be a?
What is Lot 3?
Lot 3 is a million square feet of undeveloped property, which ends up down onto Styles. Mr. Willis, I believe you own a property on Styles that a butts it on the other side.
Yes.
This is 22 acres with an A and R through planning board, there's nine acres on Styles that connects it to the other side also, Mr. Willis, I just, I'm struggling why this piece, I could never fathom that the town would do anything associated with this roadway. You're talking millions of dollars for what would be the benefit of someone, in this case, Mr. Willis happens to be owner, of developing Lot 3. And I don't see how we'd ever be in a position to want to widen the roadway, I don't, I don't.
How do you, I don't understand that gets to the house.
The point, the point isn't that the town, the point isn't that the town would be doing it, it would be the developer coming to the town, and if the town has that easement, then the town can say, you need to widen the road through this stretch.
But for what is a thousand feet, what's being suggested is that the town accepts an easement for what is 1/20 of the total frontage. If that developer needs 20 more feet in front of Lot 4, you mean they're going to build the roadway between the walls up top, and then it's just going to widen for 100 feet and narrow again? That's where I struggle with, there's a missing, it doesn't affect anything in Lot 3, it just simply affects the front of Lot 4.
Mr. Willis, can I ask, how long have you lived there?
Since 85.
And there's never been a problem before?
Well, it's, you know, it's just been, you know, all in the family.
How do you get in and out? I'm just even confused as to why this is before this war.
Yeah, me too, I don't know.
Because you grant easements.
Because the easement is going to go to the town, and, and, again, the town is not under any obligation to do anything with this easement. They're not encumbering the town to do anything, so you can, I mean, I'm just here because the lot shows it. Just because you have the easement, that doesn't mean the town's going to spend $18 million to build the road. What it gives the town, in my understanding, what it gives the town is, if a developer comes up and wants to, wants to pay $18 million, the town has some leverage to say, well, this stretch isn't so good, you need to make it better, and he can't say, I can't because I only own between the walls. The town will be able to say, yes, but we also have a 20-foot road widening easement that you can make the road better.
But only in one.
Well, the, there's an easement all the way up, there's, the only one is Lot 3 doesn't have it.
Come on, we're going to put all the cards on the table we're going to talk about. The roadway we're talking about that's unimproved is this entire stretch, it starts on the left and says Boston Hill Road. We're not talking about an easement on any of that, and you own that. We're simply talking an easement of 20 feet in front of Lot 4 only. So, so a person, if this is what the developer chooses to do.
It's true.
You sell the property, and a developer travels down and finishes this extraordinary roadway, right? It's going to be as narrow as you're assuming, because the roadway today is narrow. And then it's going to, then only for Lot 4, it's going to bump up for 20 feet, and then there isn't an easement in front of this section.
I mean, if he's building on Lot 3, I mean, they can, they can design or.
They don't have.
Who's they?
Well, the developer, the developer can build the roadway.
That's exactly it, and Lot 3, he can widen it because it's his road. And, and yes, he could take planning to court if he wanted to, but it doesn't work that way. Planning says, well, you can sue us, or you can make the road right, and usually, the road gets ripped. So Lot 3 is owned by that guy, and he can do what he wants to require. Lot 4 will not be owned by that guy.
And I said, and I publicly, publicly in that meeting said to you, it seems interesting to me that if we have the owner before us for Lot 4 and 3, you could do the same on 3, then there wouldn't be any questions about what Lot 3 looked like. Because the difference is, it's an A and R, it's approval not required, so you may not have the leverage with the developer to build the roadway with you on, because the lot is A and R.
You don't have that legal leverage. It's only, does the developer want to take planning board to court for six years, or does the developer want to swallow and do what planning board asks them? So I would suggest to you that if it was Lot 3 and the developer was there, and the planning board said, well, we want a 40-foot wide easement, the developer's not going gonna say, "No, I'll see you in court in six years," he's gonna make it 40 feet wide. He can't do it on Lot 4.
So, I've, I've never been through this before and have a question, just, just for clarification, you own both lots?
Yes.
You're asking for an easement simply on the lot that you are about to sell?
That I'm gonna not have title to.
Okay, as opposed to the entire piece of property, which I know that, Mr. Town Manager, you've already said, it's unlikely that it's developed. I just, I just wanna make sure that I, I am...
Not likely that's not a, that's gotta be next.
Well, well, I, I just, just trying to wrap my head around, around this, because it's not typical, I, I haven't seen anything like this before us, or, or that watch meetings.
I, I think I understand it, but Andrew, I'm wondering what your concern is. What is your, your, can you, like, give me the elevated, elevate a pitch on your concern, cause I'm, that's what I'm not getting.
I, I just, it's, I, this is not meant as disrespectful comment to Mr. Willis.
No.
I don't understand it, I don't understand why we're dealing with it now. If a developer comes in and is willing to sacrifice that with a roadway for the ease of a permitting process he may not, he or she may not be required to do, then the town can have an easement at any time they want.
Not on Lot 4.
Of course they could.
Can't, can't the developer just come to Lot 4?
Who owns it? The owner of Lot 4 doesn't want the road.
He's selling it.
I understand.
That's why we're doing it now, while I have title. If, if...
And what I've suggested is, if you, if this was all philanthropic, we'd just ask you to do the same easement all the way across the front of Lot 3, that would be guaranteeing a roadway with.
That's right. Well, it isn't, because it's, it was a conversation with planning, so I'm okay, we can just wrap it up. If the board wants to say, "We do not want to accept this easement," that's the board's pleasure.
But even a developer could go back to this Lot 4, people at some point, say, "Listen, I'm gonna make you a nice offer, cause I wanna do blah, blah, blah."
That's right.
And then the developer could come, I just think, it's like we're planning for something that might never happen.
That's fine. Yeah, your, your future planning for, okay, if this happens, what can we do? If it doesn't happen, what does it do to the town?
But I'm with Mr., I'm, I'm with Town Manager on if this is, uh, why aren't we granting it all the way through Lot 3, too? Why aren't you here giving us that, too? So then we guarantee that that roadway, when that property gets developed, and I say "when," because it's when, when that property gets developed, then the town is guaranteed the right-sized road. If you wanna give us the 20 feet all the way across 3, and all the way to the other side, I, I see where Mr. Mailer is coming from.
Yeah, well, I see it too, that's not gonna happen. So, if you wanna vote to not accept the easement, that's fine.
But I don't understand why it's, if they're gonna make the road the road, well, I don't understand, I don't get it.
It was a conversation, see, it's very, I'm sorry it's so late, it was a conversation with the planner, looking into the future, saying, okay...
The future guarantees the town a good road.
But it, so here's a...
If we go with the easement all the way down.
The suggestion is, I, I didn't get a recommendation from a planner, I got a request from a resident, who happens to be a town engineer.
Exactly.
I didn't get, I didn't get a request, I didn't, I didn't get a request from the planner, I didn't get a request from the planning board that recommends this under, you know, similar action. It's a pretty complicated, and I think, significant, uh, this lot, more Lot 3 than Lot 4, quite frankly, represents, and, and Boston Hill Road, if you've seen it, or if you walked on it, have used it as a trail, it's in the book somewhere, I think, this represents a pretty significant community discussion.
Sure.
And I'm not saying, I oppose it, I guess I'm left with only part of the information to have a big discussion, because Lot 4 seems to be coming well in advance of the whole discussion.
Okay.
That's what's been a little...
I, I'm totally happy with you guys voting not to accept the easement.
I'm not really ready to go any...
If that's what you guys wanna do, that's totally, totally good with me, you know?
I guess my question is, I mean, so, giving up 20 feet on the lot, it's, it's an easement that doesn't have to be ever exercised, it's just really, you know, it's there as a potential, if it needs to be, so...
To me, it's, it's, yeah, it's something the town can use if they want to, but if they don't want to, they don't have to. I don't, again, if you, if you don't wanna accept the easement, that's fine, it was just a conversation with the planner saying, "Well, when Lot 3 comes here, we can talk to him, and we can make him make it wider." But they can't to Lot 4. Lot 4's gone, so why don't we take the, why don't we grab Lot 4 now, and when Lot 3... But again, I, I, I'm totally good with whatever you guys wanna do.
I just recommend that I have a conversation with those folks who would be in a position to better, both Public Works folks, meaning Mr. Thibodeau, and the planner, about what it means. I just, I guess I'm struck, I continue, I know I'm going in circles, I, it strikes me that, it just seems like, it's not today, it's not a day discussion, because I would just simply say, if that developer was doing all that, one way or another, at a 1 million-square-foot parcel, 22 acres, there's gonna be a lot of money flowing around this discussion, and I don't think what the width of the roadway at Lot 4 is...
It's gonna matter.
Uh, I don't think it's gonna matter, but, I haven't talked to the planner, so the point is now it's under new business, I'd like an opportunity to speak to some folks internally to get their feedback.
Retable this, yeah.
Exactly, cause that's why it's under new business, and then may, it may very well be, this is wonderful to town, I just, I just like a little more info.
You know, you know, possibly the speed proposed to be built there, that's the other thing. We grant this easement, and then we find like, oh my gosh, now look what they're putting there, something we really weren't that interested in.
You're not, you're not granting the easement, I'm granting the easement, you're accepting.
But we're accepting you.
So, so if you, like, again, I'm encumbering Lot 4, if you guys don't wanna do, I'm totally good with that.
I guess I can wrap my head around it.
Yeah, it's very, it's very, it's very complicated.
He's giving the rights to access to the property.
No, I understand what an easement is, but I don't understand why, just in that area. And maybe we need more information.
If we, if we get some more information.
The reason, the reason it's why it's just in that area is, cause this was the area that came in front of planner, so, and this was, this planner, this was Matt, he said, "Okay," he's looking at the whole parcel, he says, "Okay, we've got Lot 4 in front of us, we got Lot 3 behind it." So Lot 3 comes to us, we're gonna be talking to the owner of the property. Now, he's gonna need to come across Lot 4, but that's gonna be a separate owner. Why don't we get that easement now across Lot 4? If you use it, you do, if you don't, you don't.
But, but...
But that's, I think, was the thinking, it's...
And, and I get that, but, you know where your Lot 4, your home is now? So they could come in, I mean, that, they, they could build a road around your house.
Uh, that would be a subdivision. See, then they'd have to go to planning for subdivision.
Okay, so they're gonna come in...
And again, I don't wanna represent myself as a lawyer, please, please, I, I don't mean to...
No, 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 I know that, and God knows, I'm not one, nor do I play one on TV. So basically, it's gonna be houses off of Boston Hill Road.
Well, the issue...
I don't know, I'm not ready to do any...
What I was gonna say is, I, I, Matt Eggy, Matt Eggy never brought up this discussion at all. So when it, when it arrived in the office, quite frankly, you, you folks handled easements, so, so that's what Jean asked me on the agenda, and therefore it's on the agenda. I haven't had the opportunity to speak to planning, or, or other folks who may have an opinion associated with it. It did not come back from Matt Eggy, or his superiors to me, as something that was, so when it appeared, it's new, and Jean has the right, as every citizen, to come before the group. I, I think, I would recommend that the board get some additional information before deciding whether you think this is the right way to go.
Totally fine.
Because we don't, I, I didn't even, we wanted it on the agenda, I didn't call planning, and, so we're not talking about the planning board, we're talking about the former town planner.
Right. It was just looking at the whole project and saying, "Okay, well, Lot 3, what's gonna happen? When he's here, we can talk to him about the frontage." See, it's two options. They could come with a subdivision, but then it's planning board subdivision, approval, all of that. From what I understand, they have a right, an A and R, to come up Boston Hill Road. It makes more sense to do a subdivision.
Yeah.
But, if, if things don't work in the board, or for whatever reason the developer is, he can come right up A and R Boston Hill Road. So the, the planner's saying, "Well, right now you won't at all accept that one, which was, and now we're doing Lot 4, but you're gonna get rid of it. We should probably get the easement now, because we don't know who's gonna own it in the future. And then Lot 3, we won't need an easement, will he be able to extort the fee in the street out of him? If he wants his lots, we'll say, 'You give us the land.'" So, but I, again, I, I really don't, doesn't matter, it's just a conversation that came